Okay, well, let's call this Shelton Metropolitan Park District meeting to order. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Board member Schmidt. Can you unmute yours? There you go. Board member Bowden.
Here.
Board member Peterson. We don't see her yet. President Onisco.
Here.
Board clerk McDowell.
Present.
Board member Feis.
Here.
And board member Dorsey. We don't see him yet either.
You have a motion to excuse Mayor Dorsey and Councilmember Peterson, Deputy Mayor Peterson.
I see Board member Dorsey just joined, so let me admit him to the meeting.
Okay.
I know he had another meeting right before this one, so. There he is. Board member Dorsey, can you confirm that you're here?
Here.
Thank you. So we're just missing Board member Peterson at this point.
Anybody like to make a motion to excuse Deputy Mayor Peterson?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Donna, do we have any public comments tonight? General public comment?
Let me take a look here, Mr. President. No, I don't see any, but I do see Board member Peterson is just there, so.
All right.
I will admit her, so there are no public comments.
We were waiting to confirm Deidra.
Yes.
Okay, Deidra says something here, trying to get audio working. So on our business agenda, we have a resolution, SMTD three four dash one zero two one, 2022 ad valorem taxes presented by interim finance director Terry Snitzer. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Board President and Board members. Tonight, I bring you the resolution to set the SMPD, the Shelton Metropolitan Park District regular levy for collection in 2022. This resolution will levy the statutory maximum ad valorem tax by increasing levy collections by 1% of the highest local levy amount plus new construction in any state assessed property that is legally allowed to add on. The property tax collections are allowed to increase the lower of 1% or the implicit price deflator, the IPD, and that implicit price deflator is calculated on the increase of 2021 property tax at 3.86%. So what that means is that we are able to take the full 1% allowed to a property tax. And so the property tax collection is about just over, almost $10,500 for 2022 collection. That was an increase over 2021. So with that, I'm just recommending you forward the 2022 ad valorem tax on to the meeting of November 16th.
Has anyone signed up for public testimony?
Let me take a look here. No, there is no one signed up.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm going to forward the 2022 budget resolution to the November 16th SMPD meeting for further consideration action and to allow the public another opportunity to comment on the resolution under consideration.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions or comments from councilmembers?
Me.
Okay, Kathy.
Terry, can you tell me what last year's tax was?
Well, this year's tax is going to be 598, so it is would be about $10,000 less than that, so it'll be about 588. Because it increased 10,000 this year. I don't have that number, but I can get it.
That's fine. You can I'll get you later on that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I know that this is a small amount, but I think that after the last two years of hardship that everybody's had, that we could forego this for a year. That is my opinion. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No.
Eric? Eric, can I ask you why you are opposed to it?
I just think that after the last two years that we could, we can actually give a break to the citizens on their property taxes on both park and the regulars.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, you're muted.
I didn't mute myself.
I might have done that by mistake, trying to admit someone, so my apologies.
Did we, did I answer Kathy's question then?
We got that part, yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
But you didn't state if the motion carries or not, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. There was a motion in a second and everybody all in favor with aye, motion carried. Sorry.
And I did mark that down as five in favor, one opposed, because we have not yet been able to get Board member Peterson's audio to work. We'll continue that and we'll have another opportunity for discussion on November 16th.
Okay, this public hearing is closed and we're opening another public hearing about the 2022 preliminary budget. Has anyone signed up for public testimony, Donna?
No, there's no one signed up, Mr. President.
Okay, well, did I skip something? I did. I'm sorry. And this is another one for Terry. Has the details.
Thank you again. So this resolution brings you the 2022 Shelton Metropolitan Park District budgets. This budget totals 904,000, just over 904,000, and includes 139,000 of needed park capital and major maintenance activities. And so it's short and sweet, but the details are in the resolution as to what to purchase with those dollars and to just ask you to move the 2022 budget resolution to the November 16th SMPD meeting.
Now, do we have any public testimony, Donna, since I went backwards?
Let me take a look here very quickly. No, there is no, no one signed up, Mr. President.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I moved to forward the 2022 budget resolution to the November 16th SMPD meeting for further consideration action and to allow the other, to allow public another opportunity to comment on the resolution under consideration.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. This public hearing is closed and we'll resume the special meeting. Okay, our announcement of the next meeting is November 16th at 5:45 PM. This meeting is adjourned November, I'm sorry, October 19th at 5:55 PM.
And you're muted.
You're still on mute, Kevin.
Yeah.
How's that better?
Yep.
The council meeting of October 19th, 2021 is called to order. I think we'll have Mr. Eric Bisco lead us in our lead pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Eric. All right, Donna, let's see who's here tonight.
Okay. Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
Councilmember Feis.
Here.
Councilmember Bowden.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Dorsey.
Here.
Councilmember Onisco.
Here.
And Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
All right, thank you, guys. Let's start with any changes for the agenda tonight from the council? Oh, okay. At this time, I'd like to remind the members of the public that they can make comments during the public comment period as well as any item listed on the business agenda or the action agenda. When making public comment, you will need to raise your hand electronically on the Zoom app, state your full name and whether you live, reside in the city limits, Mason County, or reside elsewhere. Option number one, join the Zoom meeting by clicking on the link that is displayed on the city's webpage. The link is listed on the agendas and minutes page under the tab that says more. Option number two, email city manager Jeff Knighton. Or option number three, call Jeff's office phone. Both email address and office number are displayed on the screen of Mason Web TV streaming video. All right, let's write the council reports of their boards. Anybody have a council report? Oh, we got lots tonight. Okay, Kathy?
It's really not a board report. I just wanted to let everyone know that I will be attending the Heroes for Housing on Thursday evening. It was going to be at the governor's mansion, but it was such a small space, they put it on live streaming, so I will be doing that. Talking about the different housing for our heroes, our first responders, our veterans, whatever, so I will be doing that.
All right, Deidra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Friday, the Peninsula Regional Transportation Project Organization Executive Board Meeting, and that group was taking another look at its legislative priorities. While there are no specific projects listed within City of Shelton, there are a number of initiatives that are in line with some of the things we've talked about, including maintaining existing infrastructure, providing long-term funding, making sure that funding provided from the state for previously awarded projects is maintained, et cetera. So I'll be forwarding that information along to city manager Knighton, so he can share that with the council. We also heard a presentation on a Dukka Bush project that Fish and Wildlife is proposing in connection with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. It's been happening for some years now, but they are seeking some capital funding, not transportation dollars for that, and it would include a realignment of 101 of Hama. So some really interesting things that came out of that meeting, and I'm sure we'll see more as we move towards the legislative session.
Anyone else? Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda as published.
All right. What's that? Okay, thanks, Megan. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Donna, do we have anyone interested in making public comments?
Let me take a look here. I don't see anyone interested in making a public comment just during this general public comment time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so we are reressessing from our regular meeting to open a public hearing. Interim Finance Director Terry Schnitzer is here to share information about the 2022 ad valorem taxes.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Donna, can you start the video? It says I cannot start the video.
Okay. Now see if it'll work. There you are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you again, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. We're bringing to you tonight the ordinance to set the regular and EMS levies for collection in 2022. This ordinance will levy the statutory maximum ad valorem tax by increasing levy collections by 1% from the highest level levy amount, and this will include the new construction and status assessed property that is legally allowed for add-ons. The property tax collections are allowed to be increased by the lower of 1% or the implicit price deflator, and that implicit price deflator for calculating the increase of 2021 property tax collections is 3.86%, which is higher than our statutory limit of 1%, so we are allowed to take that full 1%. So with that, the increased dollar amount for 2022 is just over $21,000 over from 2021 collections. So I just ask you to forward this 2022 ad valorem tax ordinance to the November 16th meeting.
All right, thank you. Donna, has anyone signed up for public testimony?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, there is no one signed up.
Okay. Will you please give us a reading of order number 1978-1021?
Ordinance number 1978-1021, an ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, setting the amount of the annual ad valorem taxes in the City of Shelton for calendar year 2022.
Okay. Do a motion, please.
I moved to forward the 2022 ad valorem tax ordinance to the November 16th council meeting for the second public hearing for further consideration and action and allow the public another opportunity to be heard on the ordinance under consideration.
I'll second it.
Okay. Well, this time, ask each councilmember for questions or make comments.
Again, it's a small amount, and I think that we could, we could forego this this year, or I believe Deputy Mayor Peterson, so that we could collect it and use it for assistance for businesses or utility bills or something like that. I just think that we've had a lot of help from the state and the federal government that we could pass on a little bit to our citizens.
All right. Mayor Peterson?
I just wanted to point out that I think that one of the things we discussed last time that still for me maintains the heart of this issue is that while we have the opportunity to not take this 1%, the 1% does not begin to outpace the increase we're seeing in expenses for aerial supplies and providing those services. So as councilmember Onisco pointed to, if there were a need, a specific need that we saw that we could reallocate some funds to provide relief to those residents that we felt were having an especially difficult time, I'd be open to that conversation, but I don't think that it's a good precedent for us to set to say we're not collecting what we're able to when we are already struggling to meet infrastructure needs and provide the services that we've seen our residents say time and again that they need and to meet that quality of service. So I'm in favor of moving forward with that ad valorem tax, and I think that it's something we're going to have to continue to work towards.
I agree, Deidra. Jeff? Can you add in here, if we were not to collect this, doesn't it take a lot of time to reinstate this later?
There is a process to reinstate it later. It's called bank capacity, so we could reinstate it later, which would cause bump over 1% at, you know, at whichever time the council desires to reinstate. But there is a process to do it, so completely within council's purview, whether they would like to approach it that way or not. The other thing I would like to point out is that it compounds. So the loss this year is a little over 21,000, but in future years, and as council will see in the 10-year financial forecast, and we will be including that in your packet, the problem compounds over time.
All right, so we have a, we have a motion and a second to forward the 2022 ad valorem tax ordinance to the November 16th council meeting for the second public hearing for further consideration and action and allow the public another opportunity to be heard in, on the ordinance under consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries. This public hearing is closed. We are opening another public hearing regarding the 2022 preliminary budget. We have another item for Terry.
Thank you, Jim.
2022 preliminary budget.
Okay, thank you again. Everybody, so I bring to you tonight this ordinance to for the adoption of the 2022 annual report or annual budget, excuse me, and provide the mechanism of the city to expend funds for the purposes established in the budget. The budget totals just over 41 million with a general fund appropriation of almost 15, over 15 million. The ordinance also provided by RCW adopts continuing appropriation for all capital projects appropriated in the adopted budget. With the continuing appropriation, capital project budgets do not lapse at the year end, rather the budget remains in place until the project completion. So within this budget, we have the projects that are being spent with the ARPA dollars, which include the Western Gateway, which is in our ARPA dollars, we received was 2.9, almost 2.98 million. And so we're going to be using 1.3, over 1.3 million on Western Gateway, which Jay will go into a little bit more in detail. And then also will also have the AMI project, the automated meter infrastructure for 800,000, and we believe these are within your strategic goals for accountable government and the community life portions of your, of your goals. And also what we have, we included a second code enforcement officer, which we believe is part of your community life strategic goals for the city. And also we'll be bringing the 10-year financial forecast to you as an exhibit in, at the November 16th meeting for you to review. And then just to mention that we're transitioning to the capital funds for water, sewer, and storm. We believe this will be very transparent way for you as a council, citizens, and our staff to know what's exactly being spent in these capital funds and also the funding sources to these funds. And also, we are expanding the capital resource funds, which will help, again, be very transparent to how we're spending those public dollars for the REIT 1 and 2 monies, the transportation benefit district dollars and the TIF dollars, which the traffic impact fees. And again, this will be very clear and transparent to staff, council, and, and our citizens. And another note is that for transparency and or to be accountable for our dollars, public works and finance staff are going to reinvent our public project meetings to where we are discussing all the capital projects. What are the fundings for these projects, making sure that we have funding for these before we bring them to council for, as an approved project? So with that, I just ask you to move the 2022 annual budget to the November 16th meeting.
We, council, we do have Public Works Director Harris and Community Development Director Ziegler to talk a little bit, and then I'll wrap it up and then we can take your questions. So Director Harris, are you, there you are, okay. A lot of boxes on the screen, there he is. So if you could talk about a couple of the capital projects, I would appreciate that.
Sure, thank you, Manager Knighton. Council, Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So some of the projects, a lot of these you've already heard about, but let me just go over them real quick again, especially the larger ones. So Western Gateway is our big street project for 2022. We have the state paying for some of the overlay costs. They're also paying for some of the sidewalk and curb costs via grants. The project will go from about 8th Street all the way to Pacific Court, so it's a quite lengthy project. We're in the final design phase. Our city engineer later tonight has a resolution for you to consider to complete the design services. You'll hear a little bit more about it. You heard some of that last meeting a little more later on that. That'll be a great project. The ARPA dollars, we're using those for the waterline extension, and that will really help get the project done. That's really what we needed to complete it. The grants were secured some years ago, years ago from the state, and now we're able to get the waterline done and pave over the top of it, which I know in our last meeting last week, nobody likes to see a road dug up after it's paved, and so getting that waterline brand new in there is really important to everybody here at the city. A couple of the water projects, the AMI project, I had a meeting with you some months ago, described that project. That's really going to help our maintenance guys going to every meter every month to get a reading and then rereads and all that. The utility billing folks will be able to get reads anytime they need them, and then the customers are going to benefit greatly from that project also, that they'll be able to get online once, once we're fully functional and get hourly readings and see what kind of water consumption they're doing. A big water project, in addition to the Western Gateway waterline, will be the well one, the high school tank waterline project. That's been in the planning for some time now. Final design plans are going to be in here next month. Staff's going to check through them. We should be going to. Staff's going to check through them. We should be going to bed in December and get a lot of these projects bid this winter, hopefully get a little bit better pricing. One concern on that project is high density polyethylene thermally fused pipe. And the availability of that pipe is a little bit of a concern right now as are all materials. So we're doing a lot of checking on our materials. And then we got to revise our contracts a little bit to allow some materials lead time for some of the contractors to get materials. On the sewer side of things, the reclaimed tank is the largest project we'll be working on next year. And we'll get the design going, probably have a bid to construct late in the year. And what that will allow us to do is store water at the membrane plant and deliver it to the state prison. And then also what they don't use, we'll be able to hold and put water out into the spray field a little more regularly rather than when we're just running the plant. And that'll be a great project for the reclaimed water system as we build that system and perhaps add customers in the future. We got some small lining projects for I and I reduction in the sewer budget also, which is really important. Those are very proactive projects to save water that we have to pipe and treat down the plants. The Civic Center parking lot is one of the storm drainage project, little tiny project, but there are some storm funds going to the alley improvements for that lot. Western Gateway, as I spoke, also has some storm drainage funds going into it. Our EM and our equipment maintenance and rental fund, we're buying a brush cover for the excavator. That will allow us to take this rubber tired X for rubber tracked excavator down into areas that are very hard to access or up areas and be able to clean brush out in steep right away areas and that sort of thing. We're purchasing a new dump truck. Our dump trucks are very, very old. And that's one of the largest EMR purchase next year is to get a new dump truck online, which will help us. We use these trucks for all sorts of things. The biggest one is snow removal, though. It will give us a very reliable truck to get out onto the streets. Probably won't be here until the winter, a year from now, right? It takes some time to order these. They're on back order. We're getting a fuel trailer in EMR, too. Not a very big purchase, it's fifteen thousand dollars, but that fuel trailer in emergency will allow us to move fuel from site to site to fill up generators when we got to run for days. We have some tanks at the yard. We'll be able to move fuel around much more efficiently within public works during during a large emergency. And then the last thing to talk about is a couple of the paving projects. So we have, we're planning to do Brokdell Road yet next year using federal stip funds. We're working with the county on acquiring those funds. And with the state, there's a bunch of processes we have to go through with the state. And our city engineer will be talking to you your next council meeting about some of those processes. The other real big street project other than Western Gateway is the Safe Route School Grant, almost three quarters of a million dollars for flashing beacons, sidewalk improvements, ADA ramps. And so we really did well gathering state funds and leveraging our TBD funds and other funds to really maximize the dollars and get a lot of projects out to the community next next year, two thousand twenty two. And I'm open to any questions.
Director Director Ziegler had a few items to talk about on the parks end, and then I'll wrap up once Director Ziegler's done.
Thank you, Manager Knighton. I'll start with our facilities capital plan. Really trying to identify equipment and structures that are starting to age out and get ahead of catastrophic or failures that might affect operations down the road. So we've got the uninterrupted power supply system here at the Civic Center that provides power in the event of a power loss before the generators kick on. Battery backup system that is critical, particularly for our Macecom or nine one one operation center. The furnaces at the William G. Reed Library, replacing both of those that are oh, about seventeen years old and currently one is failing essentially at this point. And the other is not far behind it and we and our digital controls don't work anymore as well. So no longer no longer supported network connection, so software, so that would replace that as well. So we are able to remotely control that, look at it from anywhere, yeah, from a from a monitor and computer and be able to control these systems remotely without making a special trip to the library. Uninterrupted power supply batteries at the fire station, those are aging out, so they need to be replaced. Just the batteries themselves, the the unit itself is still in working condition. And then some identification signs, like at the library, William G. Reed Library sign, you see there at Seventh and Alder, replacing that. And then a remote access system, so going to a keyless entry in a lot of our buildings. We'll be facilitating that in two thousand twenty two. It will increase security. We don't have the possibility of lost keys and having to go through rekeying buildings. We can simply deactivate a key card remotely if one is lost or somebody leaves employment at the City of Shelton and we really manage manage secure accesses throughout all of our buildings, including the Civic Center, treatment plants, public works, facilities as well. So it'll be a an upgrade that was actually planned for the Civic Center. We have some infrastructure in place near our doors. So that was planned when the building was was constructed. So that'll that'll help us out here in the coming year when that project is kicked off. As far as parks, looking at replacing a nineteen ninety six pickup with a new pickup, a new mower that would replace our existing turf mower. This is kind of different than what Director Harris was talking about. This is more of a finish mower for grass fields, ball fields, athletic fields and things like that. Some new signs, much like the library, to identify Neyland Park, Calanand Park, Loop Field and some of our other recreational facilities. Bring more attention to them, liven up the entrance. Let's see, let's see, the Loop Field parcel acquisition, we're actually taking off the budget for the two thousand twenty two. It was on in two thousand twenty one. Property owner, just we haven't come to an agreement at this point, so it's more appropriate to take that off the list. Some work on North Cliff Neighborhood Park, which is adjacent to Terrace Heights, establishing a neighborhood park in that area. We've recently done some survey work to establish park boundaries and we'll start working on that project next year as well to bring some more amenities to that neighborhood. And the Simpson Railroad Master Plan, so master plan for multi-mole trail and the associated amenities that would that would convert the existing railroad from essentially First Street out to Highway one oh one to public amenity. So we'll plan on starting our pre-design in two thousand twenty two.
Thank you, Mark. Jeff?
And then just to wrap wrap all this up, quite a bit of information, and we're happy to answer any questions. I did want to point out a couple of things. One, Councilmember Anisco did mention, noticed an error on one of our pages, and we are fixing that. Page five had an expenditure of seven hundred and seventy six thousand. And that was because in the tables on the spreadsheet, the lines bumped down to where they ought not to be. So that was an error. It didn't affect the overall bottom line, but we want to make sure we relay information accurately. So we will be fixing that. The actual expenditure is seventy one thousand, so a little over seventy one thousand. So that's that'll be a bit of a change. But that's just a point to highlight the overall message that the structure of this budget will remain the same for your November sixteenth meeting, depending on council desires and which directions they would like to go. But there are going to be some changes before your November sixteenth meeting and potentially the December seventh meeting. The moving target, we're trying to get everything in place. And we want to make sure we represent your directions accurately. So there will be some changes. Whatever changes there are will be highlighted for you so that you have the appropriate amount of time to review that before you come to a final vote. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have or any of our department heads can try to answer those questions as well.
I don't see any hands. So I guess we'll move on. All right, Donna, has anyone signed up for public testimony?
Take a look here. No, there isn't anyone signed up, Mr. Mayor.
All right, could you give me the first reading of ordinance number one nine seven nine dash one zero two one?
Ordinance number one nine seven nine dash one zero two one. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, adopting the budget for the calendar year two thousand twenty two.
All right, thank you. Do we have a motion, please?
I moved to forward the two thousand twenty two annual budget to the November sixteenth council meeting for the second public hearing to allow the public another opportunity to be heard on the budget under consideration.
Our case.
All right. Do we still not have any questions for Jay or Mark or Jeff? All right, we have a motion and second to forward the two thousand twenty two annual budget to to the November sixteenth council meeting for the second public hearing to allow the public another opportunity to be heard on the budget under consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. This public hearing is now closed. And we're going to resume our regular meeting. Next business item is an ordinance regarding homeless encampments. City manager Jeff Knighton has more information for us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. We brought this item to you in a study session a couple of weeks ago, and we incorporated several of your suggestions. We appreciate that feedback. Over the last several years, there has been a perceived number of increased number of unsheltered individuals in our downtown area and around our community in general. And we wanted to design an ordinance that approaches this issue in a compassionate way, first and foremost, but also addresses the needs of the community and things that we have heard talking with our business owners, people living in downtown. We've identified a partial solution, potential solution. We do have shelters space available in downtown. And we want to make sure we are effectively using that shelter space to address the needs of the the unhoused in our community. We also want to make sure that we utilize and especially recognize the investment that our partners at Mason County have made in the shelter in our downtown area and use those resources in our community as effectively as we can. So what this ordinance does is it clearly defines what public camping is. And it provides for an employee of the city, and it typically will be a police officer, a code enforcement officer, but it doesn't have to be. Making contact with an unsheltered individual and just advising them of the resources that are available. And that public camping on publicly owned property is prohibited. But these are the resources that are available to you. Let us make sure that or let us help you engage with those resources. That's the intent of the ordinance. There is a penalty phase written into the ordinance. But that is not our first intent. That is only to make sure that we can enforce the no public camping rule. Our first intent is to connect these individuals with resources. There have been a couple of public comments on this, several emails, one that I forwarded you this afternoon from Mr. Loomis with a couple of suggestions. I think you've all seen those. And there was a comment emailed a few days ago, and I apologize, I don't remember the exact day, but I forwarded that to council as well from Barbara Luisa with some suggestions to the ordinance. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And thank you.
Megan?
Hey, Jeff, does the does Mason County currently have a home fund tax?
I am not sure. As you heard a little bit earlier, we've been working on our own, our own budget. But I can certainly can certainly look into that, but I'm not sure what all their revenue sources are.
Okay, I think that's something that we need to take a look at. If the county is currently collecting a home fund tax, then we need to have some conversations with them about dispersment to our municipality. And then if they're not, then I think that we really need to do some homework and some work studying on what that means for how we come up with solutions for this for the future. We know what our budget outlook looks like for general fund. And I think that we really need to be thoughtful about planning for the future on this. I'm and and, you know, we again, we we just looked at all of our funds. You know, we we know exact exactly where we're at with shoring up our infrastructure. We know that we're on the long game, short on that, too. So if we're going to come up with solutions, then we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it. And my recommendation is as staff is taking a look at, you know, what a home fund tax does, how much we might be able to collect on that, if it's a like attached to a sales tax type situation, which again, there needs to be lots of analysis there. You know, how do we how do we also establish it as an economic development driver? So that there are certain things in in the programming that's funded, like short term training cohorts that might be developed through a maker space, something like that. Where we're providing mitigation sites for homeless folks in transitional housing that there's requirements for them to be, you know, going through short term training, you know, either learning how to, you know, get their skills sharpened up for demand occupations here locally and and or getting into a situation where they can be entrepreneurs, help rebuild our main street. So that's 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 my questions and wonderings. And then I really would like to see the data around. I know that we're not capacity with all of our shelter situations, our behavioral health hospital situation. And I really want to see that data. I want to see what our bed counts are. I want to see how many folks we've got in daily, weekly, monthly. And I want to see like what the return on investment is happening in this community for bundled services. Because this siloed approach to how we serve our community isn't working. So I'd really like to see what this network is doing to and 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 if and if we're seeking opportunity and future funding as a council, I I need to see what the asset map looks like and what funds are already being expended so that we can fully support a strategic plan for the community.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to public comments. From Donna, do we have any?
Let me look here, Mr. Mayor. I'm I'm expecting that there should be, but I don't see anyone with their hand raised via Zoom or, you know. This. There is no public comment, Mr. Mayor. Oh, wait.
Oh, here we are. Wendy Petty?
Yes. So Wendy, you have three minutes to give your comment to council.
All right, and for the for the record, my name is Wendy. I live in Mason County, but operate a business inside the City of Shelton. And I I'm really here tonight. And I, I'm really here tonight to continue sharing with each of you my thoughts on the drafting of this ordinance to penalize homeless camping within the city. I wanted to thank Councilman Schmidt for making sure our group received a copy of the ordinance and for allowing us to provide a recommendation on an amendment. Our recommendation was minimal and I trust that it was shared. I want to be sure that it stated that Crazy Love Ministries does not support the homeless camping around town, nor does it support individuals who are defiant and complying with our local laws. Everyone we service is fully aware of this. And we place huge emphasis on being respectful citizens and on different ways that we can all work towards being assets in our greater community. Despite our being in agreeance, for the reasons that, that this ordinance is being considered, Crazy Love will continue to make pleas to the city on behalf of those that we service that you please hold off on in stating any ordinances that allow for misdemeanor charges against our homeless until adequate expansion of shelter options have been made attainable to them. I personally don't think penalizing our homeless is going to motivate them whatsoever. The majority of them are broken down so severely, they're probably going to care less. What they need are more places to go during the night hours. Even if Community Lifeline does pass inspections to qualify to upgrade to 50 beds, this is still not nearly enough to accommodate our current homeless population. In addition, the sleeping accommodations at Community Lifeline are set up to serve a short-term need. We can only put people into groups like this for so long before someone's in a bad mood or someone has a mental health outburst, which then causes disturbance for everyone. Some of these types of disturbances are oftentimes are causing people to not want to return or to not be allowed to return. Our group and our associates want to coordinate future discussions with our city county leaders, other state and local nonprofits to discuss what is working in other areas when it comes to individual dwelling units. This style of living with a proper governance provides people a better sense of stability, not to mention the personal space and privacy that everyone needs. While case managers and peer counselors can then continue working with people towards their full independence. Those battling mental health will be less likely to cause someone else's regression when people have outbursts. Because people will be able to retreat to personal designated spaces and they.
Wendy?
Yes.
That is, that is your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. All right. Anyone else?
Let me check. I don't see anyone else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a reading of ordinance number one nine seven seven, zero nine two one.
Ordinance number one nine seven seven dash zero nine two one. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Shelton, Washington, enacting a new chapter eight point seven four of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to public camping and homeless encampments.
Did we get a second?
He just had a first reading, Mayor. Need a motion?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
So I'll move to, I'll move that ordinance number nineteen seventy seven zero nine twenty one before to the action agenda for November second, two thousand twenty one.
I'll second it.
All right, now do we have any questions?
Comment.
Comments?
Go ahead.
First, Joe.
Thank you. I, thank you very much to receive feedback from a few of our nonprofits that are on the front lines of the homeless crisis on a daily basis. And, and again, that is, that's exactly why we do what we do. Initially, there was apparent, there was a, some misinformation posted in the in local media about what we are up to and we are absolutely not criminalizing homelessness. Matter of fact, we're kind of doing just the opposite. And our current city ordinance as written is not constitutional. So we are simply changing our city ordinance to become constitutional. That said, unenforceable until we have some sort of permanent housing supportive service in the community that we can send people to. So I empathize with the comments that were brought up this evening and I appreciate the interaction. That's, that's how this, problems like this get, get solved, or at least the foundational components of which start to get solved, right? Lot of, lot more conversation. This is, and I just want to be clear, this is not, at least in my opinion, this is not a part of the, necessarily the homeless housing, you know, solution per se, but this is part of the, you know, those initial steps that we need to take. And again, crimes are crimes and the city should be postured in a way to deal with that and to hold people accountable for their actions. And again, I, I fully agree with the sentiments, the comments that were made this evening. And I believe, and to speak for some of the other council members as well, I believe we are fully committed to working on this issue and making strides here in the near future with, with actual actionable projects and things like that. So we appreciate this and invite those who spoke out this evening to continue to, to hang with us as we move along. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate your comments. Eric?
I've been thinking about this a lot. I mean, I think I even had a dream about it. And I agree, something needs to be done. I think we're jumping the gun on making these misdemeanors. We, we need to think about, you know, or courts prosecutor or public defenders. We need to think about the people involved. Do they really have a place to go? Are they really welcome at one of the shelters? Are there, are there beds available? I think that we're really jumping the gun and I'd like to table this until, and put together a panel of council members, county commissioners, health departments, police, fires, citizens, local stakeholders, and prosecutors, of course, there are public defenders. And, and really sit down at a table and, and see if we can figure this out. I, I just really think that we, we jumped the gun on this. And I would like to study it more. With that being said, I'm done.
Thank you, Eric. I don't know who is first, Megan or James? So go ahead, Megan.
James was actually first, so he should go.
Sure, mine's quick and easy. I, I, I fully support this. That's all I have to say.
We losing?
Well, I support this, Mayor. I am with Eric. I think that we need to see the exact data. I think that we need to be fully, fully informed on what the activity is, how our nonprofits are interacting and serving our community. I think we need to understand what our gaps are in supporting that as a city. I think we need to understand what it's going to take to put a home fund together. And I don't think that we should be prosecuting folks for homelessness now. I do think that there's a way forward with this ordinance. Is there an opportunity for us to adjust that language? Put an ordinance forward though, and continue to move this forward through a Shelton houseless task force. You know, and, and we, there's got to be some silos broken down between the partners that are delivering these services and the understanding of how we work together. So it's hard. It's a hard one, you know, and I, I, I don't know. I, I'm curious. I mean, Deidre, what do you think? You know, from, from our downtown community or, you know, we've heard some from some of our businesses already, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't think this is an answer. And this is one piece of the conversation, certainly. And to Councilmember Schmidt's point, I think that this is in my mind a first step in housekeeping to make sure that the ordinances and the codes and the laws that we have on the books are defensible and are right. There's nothing in this that says we must take these penalties out on folks. I have an incredible confidence in our law enforcement staff led by Chief Beeson, that there will be and a compassion applied with this. And I do think that this, to Eric's point, speaks to a much larger conversation and a lot of those conversations are taking place. But as has been noted by many people in this room tonight, there's lots of conversations happening in lots of places, but there isn't a single movement forward to work towards a, a solution that everyone's in the same boat rowing in the same direction. So one of the things that I think we need to take a look at is, we've heard from our city law enforcement officers, we've heard from our downtown, not only businesses, but neighbors, and I'm sure that Councilwoman McDowell will speak this as well. No one wants to put someone in a position where they don't feel safe. And that goes for our unhoused folks as well as people who are trying to take care of their day-to-day business. And, you know, quite frankly, up until this point, we just said, well, there's nothing we can do about it. And that's not necessarily the case. So, you know, this to me is step one. If we're going to expect certain behavior, we need to clarify that and make that very clear. But I don't think that in my mind, you know, I don't think the intent of this from council is to start to charge folks or to penalize them for the fact that they are homeless, but instead to provide a, a means to have those conversations about navigating resources. And I do agree that this is part of a much larger conversation. I'm glad to see that our, some of our community partners are on the line tonight because this is something that has drastically affected our community and a lot of communities. And we need to be working towards some thoughtful, creative solutions because there's not a magic wand to wave over this. I have had comments from folks who have businesses in the downtown core that we shouldn't be not charging someone for a fine or a penalty if they're having bad behavior, that laws should be applying to everyone, whether, I mean, and that's the one kind of opposite end of the spectrum that I've heard out of this conversation. But I don't even think in my mind, that's really the question we're looking at here. So I appreciate the continued conversations with our partners. If there are tweaks we need to make to the language, I'm open to that, but I do think it's important that we have on the books what is defensible, what is lawful and is clarifying the expectations of behavior within our community.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can add just real quick, as a point of clarity, we will check if shelter beds are available. If there are no beds available, then we cannot enforce any criminal penalties. And that is, we can't, under the Boise decision and many others. And we will check the shelter capacity at the beginning of each, beginning of each shift. And I also saw a, a note or a suggestion that we can check and forward that particular violator. And that's something that we can certainly look into if we have the capacity to do that. But just to be clear, we cannot enforce any criminal penalties or any penalties if there are no shelter beds available. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Jeff. I just wanted to add to that. To some of Joe's point and Deidre's point that there needs to be compassion in this and and maybe even above all legality and Deidre mentioned that as well. And also I, I witnessed this firsthand just the other day. Chief Carol Beeson was walking back to her office from a coffee shop and there's a man laying on the sidewalk. And she got right down and talked to him compassionately, offered different things and helped him sit up. And so I just, I just wanted to share that.
It, I just kind of want to reiterate, remind, I guess, is the city ordinance, correct me if I'm wrong, at, at any time, if the council decides we need to make a change to a city ordinance, a majority vote of the council would ratify that and, and ordinance could be changed. So in the future, as we progress through planning and other discussions and as data is gathered, we still have opportunities to refine our, you know, and codify different avenues related to this effort. And there's, there's a lot of discussion. I'm like the rest of you, I'm, I'm ready and waiting to start on that. I don't see a need to delay. And so whenever, whenever that opportunity arises, I look forward to it. So I hope we can keep continuing this and again, making, making some significant strides in the, in the short term.
And Mr. Mayor, just as a matter of procedure, every council member has the opportunity to speak once after the votes on the floor. And so if there's more discussion about that, this, we can certainly have that. But once the motion's on the floor, a vote needs to happen after each council member has had the opportunity to speak.
All right. Is everybody, Kathy hasn't spoke yet.
Yeah, I had a little experience today walking down on Second Street, past a building where an individual was curled up with his blanket and was sleeping. And I could have gotten angry with him and told him to get out of there that, that's, but he looked up at me and I just, I just stopped and said hi to him. And he said, thank you very much. There's not very many people that say hi to me. So the compassion, we have to have compassion at the top of this list on whatever we come up with.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. So, oh, Eric, did you speak yet?
I did, I did speak, but before we, we vote, I, I would like to see if I can make a motion to amend, to remove the, the penalties, criminal penalties, make them civil penalties rather than criminal at this time, because I think we're jumping the gun.
All right. So do we have a motion?
I think I made one.
That's a request to amend. So we would need another council member to second that request to amend and then the overall motion.
Do we have a second? Kathy has a second. All right, we have a motion and a second to, what was it again? Remove what?
Remove it as misdemeanors and put it back to civil penalties, financial.
All right, to remove civil penalties and put it back, misdemeanors and put it to civil. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
All right, the motion did not carry. So we go back to the original motion. We have a motion and a second to forward the ordinance number one nine seven seven dash zero nine two one to the action agenda for November second, two thousand twenty one. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
To oppose, okay. So motion carries. Thank you very much, guys. All right, we have another item from Jeff, a prosecution services contract.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. City council has spoken to staff and has made it clear through their strategic goals that code enforcement is one of their priorities. With the new prosecution services contract that is before you for consideration this evening, we wanted to ensure that the individual that was submitting for this contract was well-versed in code enforcement procedure, particularly in Washington State, and was familiar with how to handle those procedures. The Young Love and Coker was one of the, was the respondent to our request for proposals. Very experienced prosecuting all types of municipal cases, including code enforcement, which is something that we waited heavily in the which is uh something that we waited heavily in the RFP. Uh, the contract is attached to your briefing sheet, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any public comments, Donna?
Let me take a look, Mr. Mayor. No, we don't.
All right, do we have a motion to push, uh move this forward?
I moved that disagreement before to the action agenda for November second, twenty twenty one.
Second.
Still no questions or comments for Jeff?
I have one question. I apologize, Jeff, um for putting you on the spot for a random uh statistic, but uh I recall when we started talking about this a year or so ago, you had a statistic of total number of crimes that were ultimately prosecuted in the city. It was a very low number, which is also part of the reason why we're entertaining this change. Um, do you recall what that number was versus the total number of crimes that, you know, were arrested, arrestable offenses, that sort of thing?
I I remember discussing uh that statistic. I do not remember the exact number, but I can and will provide that for you uh tomorrow. Um, it won't be difficult to find. I just don't have it in front of me right now.
Sorry about that. Yeah, it'd be, I think it'd be helpful for the action portion when we get to the next meeting. So thank you.
I will make sure council has that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to forward this agreement to the action agenda for for November second, twenty twenty one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we had lots to cover tonight, don't we? Our last business item is the cancellation of WSP's latecomers agreement. Jeff has the details for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate our city clerk uh uh Donal putting this last on the business agenda anyway, because it is uh the absolute best piece of information uh that I can provide to you this evening. Uh, as council knows, we have been working with our legislative delegation and members of the governor's office uh for several years now in order to address the issues that are compounded by the uh the latecomers agreement with our partners at the Washington State Patrol and their academy. Uh, we are grateful that the academy is here, uh that uh that brings in uh quite a few people under our community. Uh, but there was the question of the two point seven million dollars uh that were attached to parcels in between um Walmart and the Fred Myers area right down there south of the port and the State Patrol Academy with uh this agreement. And we did uh get the language in the proviso. The governor's office uh worked with us very closely to get that language in the transportation bill. Uh, and it was approved and was signed by the governor, a big accomplishment for us. Uh, and uh this agreement is the actual mechanism by which the uh the latecomers agreement will be canceled. Um, it's really, it it's not a formality, but it is uh the mechanism that we'll take to the county and those attached parcels that are affected by the old latecomers agreement and get all of that stuff gone. Uh, and I think it'll make uh economic development in our community, especially the northern part of uh of the city um move more quickly than it might have otherwise. Uh, with that, the agreement and the proviso language uh that was in the adopted transportation budget at the state level is included in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank our delegation and the governor's office for making this happen. It made available land that wasn't affordable now affordable and available. So hopefully we get some development up there.
Yeah, here, here.
Still remember two or three years ago when we were establishing legislative priorities and, you know, we're usually focused on infrastructure projects. And this was one of those ones where, hey, let's throw it out there and let's see what can happen and struck out the first year, but not to anyone's fault and came back the next year and made it happen. And Jeff, appreciate you sticking through that and uh appreciate uh Mr. Troy Nichols and uh to echo Councilmember Onisco's, thanks to the thirty fifth district delegation um for also assisting us with this. This is a huge win for the city and the urban growth area and the economic opportunity zone in that area. So hopefully uh we start to see some some movement. So thank you.
Yeah, I want to shout out a big thanks to for working on that for a couple of years. Did a good job. All right. Any quick comment, Donna?
Let's see here. No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, how about a motion?
I moved that disagreement before to the action agenda for November second, two thousand twenty one.
Second.
All right, any more questions for Jeff? All right, we have a motion and a second to forward this agreement to the act agenda for November second, twenty twenty one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're gonna recess from our regular meeting to open a public hearing. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about a resolution for utility property surplus.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, oh.
If I may, you skipped over action item number one.
Did I miss one?
Yeah, there's, there's one.
Sorry.
There's like, there's fifty.
Me out again.
Busy agenda tonight.
Okay, forget what I just said. Let's go back. Our first action item is the Western Gateway Design Contract Amendment. City Engineer Ken Gill is here to share some information with us. Hi, Ken.
Hey, Mayor Dorsey, I forgive you. That's okay.
Thank you.
Harris already talked about it tonight. You know, we've already done with that. I totally get it. So uh, what is here in front of you tonight is a repeat of what I presented you a couple of weeks ago. Uh, it's a hundred K contract to finish the design and get us out to bid just before Martin Luther King Day next year. So uh today on the way in this morning, I saw the crews uh blowing leaves by the tracks. Uh, one of the cost savings things that we've talked about internally is uh as part of the construction contract, our crews do the 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 labor to remove those tracks instead of our contractor. So um I recommend that you uh adopt this uh resolution and move us closer to construction. That's all I have tonight. Um and uh also want to do a kind of a a quick shout out, big thank you um to uh the folks, all the folks that helped us uh with our chip seal project that turned out great on North Thirteenth. And also a big help, big thank you to uh the folks that helped out with Park Street and Fourteenth. So those uh completed our paving projects for the year, just in the nick of time before it starts to rain. So.
All right, thank you. Public comments, Donna?
Let me see. No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, can you give me a reading of Resolution Number one, two, zero, eight, dash zero, nine, two, one?
Yes. Resolution Number one, two, zero, eight, dash zero, nine, two, one. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve supplemental agreement number three to the professional services agreement with Grant Osborne Incorporated titled Access Shelton Phase Four, West Downtown, Western Gateway.
All right, thank you. Do you have a motion, please?
I'm moving to adopt Resolution Number one, two, zero, eight, dash zero, nine, two, one, and the Western Gateway Design Contract, and then number three.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number one, two, zero, eight, dash zero, nine, two, one, and the Western Gateway Design Contract, number three. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Let's go back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Now we're gonna recess from our regular meeting to open a public hearing. Public Works Director Jay Harris has information for us about a resolution for utility property surplus.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council, Jay Harris, Republic Works Director again. Uh, so I have a resolution for the surplus of uh city owned property. Uh, I presented it the the last meeting, October fifth, to you folks. Uh, we own seven properties that are no long, uh some properties are no longer needed uh for our city operations. Uh, four on Harvard Street, two around Thirteenth, and then one is on Front Street next to Builder's Supply. Um, we're looking to declare those properties as surplus. Uh, we'll uh go and get appraisals. Uh, we will market the properties and then I come back to you with any sales contracts or purchase agreements um that uh come out of uh us marketing the properties. Uh, there's been no revisions to the resolution since I spoke to you last, and uh I'm available for questions.
All right. Any comments for Jay? All right, has anyone signed up for public testimony, Donna?
No, there's no one signed up, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Would you give us a reading of Resolution Number one, two, zero, nine, dash one, zero, two, one?
Yes. Resolution Number one, two, zero, nine, dash one, zero, two, one. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, declaring multiple city properties as surplus and authorizing the city manager to commence a process to sell the real properties.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt Resolution Number one, two, zero, nine, dash one, zero, two, one. A resolution declaring multiple city properties as surplus and authorizing city manager to commence the process to sell the real properties.
Second.
Any anything for Jay at all? Any questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to a resolution Number one, two, zero, nine, dash one, zero, two, one. A resolution declaring multiple city properties as surplus and authorizing the city manager to commence the process to sell the real properties. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now closed. And we'll reopen our regular meeting. Our next action item is a resolution for SPD body worn cameras. Police Chief Carol Beeson has information for us. Hey, Carol.
Good evening, Mayor Dorsey, Deputy Mayor Peterson, and members of council. Uh, as we discussed once before, uh, the Shelton Police Department utilizes body worn cameras and in car cameras in order to keep our community safe and be transparent in our transactions with the community. The current cameras that we have have been, they are no longer in production. When they break, we have no means of getting them replaced at this point, so we'd like to purchase new ones. Um, part of the funding can be using the American Recovery Act monies. So we'd like uh council to approve the purchase of new body worn cameras and dash cams for the police department.
Okay. Any public comment, Donna?
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, would you please give us a reading of Resolution Number one, two, one, zero, dash one, zero, two, one?
Resolution Number one, two, one, zero, dash one, zero, two, one. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign purchase orders for the acquisition of body worn cameras.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution Number one, two, one, zero, dash one, zero, two, one, as presented.
A second.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions or comments for Carol? Eric has one.
I I just want to say to the council that I've been for this from day one. But I was down at my marina in Olympia, Washington, um working on my sailboat and I walked, met a gentleman and we were having a discussion and he and it came out, I was city council, and he told me that he was the salesman for these cameras. I just wanted to let you guys know that I, there was about a thirty second conversation. I said, we don't need, we can't talk about this anymore. So, but I was for him before I met him and I just want to let everybody know that in case it ever came up. But it was like a thirty second. He says, oh, I'm your salesman. I said, oh, we're done.
Well, thanks for full disclosure, Eric, and um I hope you didn't scare him off.
No, we talked about boats after that, but.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number one, two, one, zero, dash one, zero, two, one, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. All right. Looks like Jeff's up again. We're keeping him busy tonight. Information for us regarding an AP system replacement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Uh, we presented the uh the new JAB system, the Justice Audio Visual System at your last meeting. Uh, the system is sixteen years old. Uh, it is failing and uh uh, as my dad would say, it's held together with bubble gum and baling wire. Uh, so this is uh the new system uh presented for you. It is, will work with all the Mason County Courts and will provide HD video uh for our uh our judge and uh the representing attorneys to facilitate those hearings. Uh, happy to answer any questions. Oh, nothing has changed since the first time that you heard this item and happy to answer any questions.
All right, do we have a public comment, Donna?
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, could you give us a reading, please, of Resolution Number one, two, one, one, dash one, zero, two, one?
Resolution Number one, two, one, one, dash one, zero, two, one. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to purchase, to sign purchase orders for the acquisition of audio visual equipment.
Okay, do we have a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution Number one, two, one, one, dash one, zero, two, one, as presented.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Joe has a second. All right. Questions? All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number one, two, one, one, dash one, zero, two, one, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's move on. We got one more item for Jeff. He has information for us regarding grant recommendations from the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Uh, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, or LTAC, uh, had met earlier this year and provided the recommendations that you see on your report. Uh, there was some question uh about whether council could modify those recommendations. Uh, we looked into that and provided council with the information on how that process would work. Uh, council can modify the recommendations, but we need to provide uh the LTAC, uh LTAC committee, sounds kind of redundant. But uh the LTAC group um uh an opportunity to comment on those modifications. Uh, nothing has changed since the first time you heard this item, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Jeff? All right.
I would like to consider uh bringing this back to the committee because of a misinterpretation of the RCW, which is limiting the full grant award for certain uh for certain events that were listed here. Further, I'll ask that in this particular case, this is one of those particular taxes that is designed to go right back out. It it is a protected fund. It cannot really be used for anything else um under the tourism related events. Um, I think it behooves us to keep that money circulating in the community, especially in the economic climate that we're in. Um, it really serves no purpose for us to continue to bank that capacity once we've met our council goals of the of of our fund balance uh and fund balance needs. So I would just ask the council, consider that and uh and take that back to the committee for clarification.
All right.
Hey, I'm gonna excuse myself for the remainder of this conference.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry, I was looking for an opening there. And Jeff, if you will, please just let me know when folks are done and I will rejoin the group.
Thank you, Deidre.
Uh, if that was a motion, I would second that. Councilmember Schmidt.
All right. Let's, uh, okay, so we have a motion. Do we have it? You have the second? And, um,
If, uh, Mr. Mayor, if it could, if, uh, Councilmember Schmidt could restate his statement in the form of a motion. Uh, if that's what he chooses, that would be great.
All right.
Uh, I guess I'll move to amend, or excuse me, I will move to, uh, take the, uh, recommendation from the LTAC Committee back to the LTAC Committee to request, uh, the full dissemination of the funds in accordance with the RCW.
Second.
That makes sense.
We have, uh, we have a motion and a second to, and, and I'm going to say this. We have a motion. How do we do that?
I think, uh,
Just presented.
Yeah, I think, I think we have a motion and a second to, uh, ask the LTAC to reconsider, uh, the award structure and amounts.
Motion and a second to ask the LTAC Committee to
Reconsider.
Reconsider the, uh, the amounts. All right. And we have a second. Okay, so. Any other questions about it? All right, you can, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No, um, excuse me. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, so. Um, our last action item is a resolution for an agreement with the Kitsap Humane Society.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We need to wait for Deputy Mayor to come back.
Oh, I missed one again, didn't I?
No, you didn't. You just need to wait for Deputy Mayor Peterson to come back before we move on. We're all going to be ready for bed when this is over. This is a lot tonight.
Makes up for the short ones.
Wait a minute. Hey, didn't we miss one?
Yes, the FCS Group.
Number six?
Contract is the next one, Mr. Mayor. Item number six. Once Deputy Mayor returns. Do you see it there?
Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
There we go.
There. Okay. We're on.
Um, let me make one comment if I can still do it. Um, Jeff, I would like to have, when we reconsider, when the LTAC reconsiders, I would like to have the RCW explained very well.
Sure.
Awesome.
Yeah, we can do that.
Cause I know we're going to have some feedback. Okay, Internal Finance Director Terry Stitzer has information about a contract with the FCS Group.
Thank you, councilmembers. Um, tonight we're asking that council, uh, approve a contract with FCS Group, uh, who will help the city develop a master plan, uh, to support the transition to, um, the rental and replacement fund from our equipment maintenance and care fund. Um, this will help centralize all of the city vehicles and equipment. And there has not been any changes since the last, uh, meeting to this contract.
Do we have any public comment here, Donna?
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, how about a motion?
I move that we approve the FCS Group contract as presented.
Second.
Okay. Councilmembers, have any questions or comments?
Just thank you. Keep on, keepin' on that project, you know, it'd be really great when we have that asset management system. So, thanks again for the consistency and the the trudging forward.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the FCS Group contract as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, our last action item is a resolution for an agreement with the Kitsap Humane Society. Police Chief Carol Beeson has a detail.
Good evening. Uh, as you all know, we have a, uh, an animal shelter here in the city of Shelton that is predominantly, uh, run by our code compliance officer. Um, in cases where animals are abandoned or, uh, picked up by officers without, uh, the owner being present, um, we're required to hold on to those animals for 72 hours for someone to claim them. And in the event that someone doesn't claim them, then we make arrangements to have that animal adopted or foster care or whatnot. Um, this arrangement tends to take a lot of our animal control officers time, uh, when she is having animals in the, uh, in the pound. And what we were hoping to do is get into an arrangement with the Kitsap, uh, Humane Society. So any animal that would be in our care longer than the 72 hours, that we would be able to transfer that animal to their facility where they will work on getting that animal adopted. Um, the Kitsap Humane Society would charge us $200 for every dog that we transfer over there and $100 for every cat. Um, this would alleviate our code compliance officer having the long-term responsibility. In some cases, it takes several weeks in order to find a family to adopt or to turn that animal over to adopt a pet so that they can take on that adoption for us. Um, usually in the time that, uh, I've been here, we average less than five animals a month that would meet this criteria. They're mostly dogs. Um, and our purpose for doing this would be so that, um, animals that are picked up, they would be taken to our pound temporarily for that 72 hours. And then our, uh, animal control slash code compliance officer would then transfer them to Kitsap for the adoption process, and they would in turn take care of that animal until a suitable family could be found. That way she would be more available to handle code compliance issues as they come up in the city. Um, that's, uh, all the information I have for you. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Go ahead, Deidre.
I, I, just to clarify, it's my understanding that the reason we are not entering into a contract with the Mason County Humane Society is because they do not currently operate a facility and shelter, although that is part of their long-term goal. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. We have anybody for a public comment, Donna?
No public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Could you give us a reading of Resolution Number 1212 dash 1021?
Resolution Number 1212 dash 1021. A resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Kitsap Humane Society for long-term animal care and adoption.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before, uh, before a motion is made, if as part of the motion, uh, it could be stated that, uh, council has agreed to place this directly on the action agenda, just so we can follow through, um, the, uh, the process line.
I move to waive the three-touch rule and to approve Resolution Number 1212 dash 1021 as presented.
Second.
Right. We have a motion and a second um, for Resolution Number 1212 dash 1021 as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Back to Jeff. You give us your city manager report, please.
I have a whole lot of things to talk about tonight.
Oh, no.
I'm going to sit back then.
Uh, just, uh, just a couple of things I wanted to mention. First, uh, people are downloading our app, which is great. But one of the things I wanted to share with council is that we received, uh, two great compliments, uh, on the app. I have them here. I don't want to read them, uh, read the entire things this evening, but I do have them here. Uh, very complimentary of our, uh, our, our team members here, uh, promoting positivity. Uh, and we have kind, hardworking and amazing employees, and I absolutely agree with that. I think that's great. Uh, and the other one is, uh, when they drive by, they almost always get a wave, which is also great. We want to make sure that we acknowledge, uh, acknowledge the people that are here. Uh, it's a great part of the community, a great part of being part of the community. Um, see here, uh, Kalanen Park, there was a mention made of, uh, perhaps installing a camera near the new Hope Garden, uh, and, uh, near the parking lot. Uh, we are planning to do that. We haven't done it yet. There is a lot of work going on there with, uh, digging a new water ditch. But after all those improvements are complete, that, uh, that trail cam will be installed. Uh, so just wanted to give you a quick update there. Wanted to invite, uh, everyone, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting the State of the Community Address on Thursday. Uh, and the mayor and I will be participating in that. Mayor doing most of the talking, of course. Uh, but we have prepared a great presentation as part of that event and, uh, looking forward to participating in that. Um, let's see here. Also, on October 29th, uh, the chamber is hosting the Spooktacular event, uh, for kids to enjoy Halloween downtown. Hopefully it's dry, uh, but I don't think we can count on that, unfortunately. Uh, but that event will be from, uh, four to 6 p.m. in the afternoon. And really looking forward to that and, uh, to our police department participating in that as well.
Manager Knighton, I would be remiss if we didn't also give credit to Shelton merchants. This has been a long-term partnership with, with them, and so we're excited to see like over 25 businesses, not all usually downtown, um, downtown for that event. And there are a number of other activities being hosted um, throughout the community, and there is a community-wide map put together for all those things. Thank you.
Love all the sugar. It's going to be, it's going to be amazing. Uh, and then, uh, also probably the biggest one, uh, C Street. Uh, we have finally gotten an answer from the Department of Ecology. I wanted to make sure that the community was aware of it. We will be sending the, uh, information out as soon as, uh, we, we receive their flyer basically, but we'll be sharing that on all of our, uh, social media platforms. The comment period on the C Street, uh, landfill will open on November 4th. Uh, we'll close on December 7th, and right in the middle of that, uh, the Department of Ecology will be hosting an information session on November 18th from 6:30 to 7:30, and we will make sure to, uh, share those dates again. Um, and, uh, to make sure that, uh, people have an invite to the information meeting. It's not a hearing, uh, but it is an information, uh, information providing meeting. So make sure people have an opportunity to access that. Lastly, uh, looking ahead, a couple of things coming up, but the one I think I'm most excited about on the 26th, uh, week from today, uh, we will be presenting you our, uh, options for new logos. Uh, so I'm really looking forward to that, along with an animal ordinance to go along with the, uh, the Kitsap Humane Society agenda item that you heard tonight. So we have, uh, several great logos, uh, several great designs that I think are really representative, and, uh, can't wait for you to see them. And with that, um, oh, should probably mention on, uh, November 2nd, uh, we have a few things coming. The Safe Routes to School that was mentioned briefly earlier this evening, uh, resurfacing of Brockdale Road, uh, and also a couple of the items, uh, that were on your business agenda tonight. Uh, the Prosecution Services Contract, the Lake Comers Agreement, and the Public Camping Ordinance. Uh, and with that, I am, uh, uh, done. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me. Um, all right. So, thank you, Jeff. Does the council have any new items for discussion tonight?
I do. Uh, well, defer to Councilmember McDowell. She beat me to the punch.
Kathy first.
I just want to make a little comment. November 2nd, get out and vote. Anyway, that's all I had to say.
All right. Joe?
Yeah, uh, you know, the last week or so, as we've been reviewing the homeless encampment ordinance, um, one of the topics that has come up, I've noticed in between, uh, feedback, uh, relates to trespassing and the trespass ordinance or law around that. Um, I would like to learn more about that and how that is, um, utilized, uh, in the city limits. Um, so I guess to the city manager and council members, if there's an appetite to learn more about that, I would like, uh, I would like more information about what trespassing actually means from a criminal, uh, perspective and how it's being leveraged around our community, um, in, in different circumstances. So, um, as we progress through this, I think that's one of those things in code and law that it's good to probably understand. Um, but that was just one topic that, uh, I found I was not as, uh, aware of as I thought I was. And, and, uh, in certain areas of the community, uh, that terminology gets interchanged, I think, sometimes, and um, it may be part of some of the reason we are having some internal conflicts between other organizations when, when we're trying to resolve, uh, homeless behavior or adverse behavior uh, in, in the homeless community. So, uh, that's one request. Thank you.
Happy to, happy to put something together for, uh, for council to consider, uh, at a work session, a future work session.
Yeah.
Study session.
Thank you, guys. All right. So our next council meeting will be on Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021 at 6 o'clock. This meeting is adjourned at 7:35.